We have no presentations to make tonight. And we always start a meeting by standing and having a pledge of allegiance and invocation, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to be out here tonight and make decisions for the county. Please watch over us and help us to make the best decisions possible. Please watch over each one of us tonight as we leave and keep us all safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Roll call of the commissioners and everyone's present except for Commissioner Warren. So we show him absent. Adoption of the agenda. Entertain a motion to adopt the agenda or any additions or deletions.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion.
Like.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose? Passes. Okay. The second, the number four item is proclamations. And part of the pleasure of my job as chairman of this board is to award proclamations. We have two tonight. One is for Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated Day. And I'll take the time to read it because I feel like this is very important. Whereas since the founding of Georgia in 1733, over 1 million of its finest citizens have served in the military, to include active duty, reserves, and National Guards. And whereas the patriotic men and women of Walton County have always served to ensure that Walton County, Georgia and America are defended and protected. And whereas Georgia currently has 678,304 living veterans of former service to America's military branches. And whereas in 2013, the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame, Inc., was established to honor and induct annually 15 Georgians into the nation's premier Military Veterans Hall of Fame. And whereas through 2023, 177 Georgians have been inducted, to include two from Walton County. And whereas since establishing an annual ROTC scholarship program in 2020, the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated has awarded 39 $4,000 scholarships to Georgia's top 39 senior high school junior ROTC cadets who are enrolled in the ROTC program at a Georgia four-year university. And whereas we commend the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame and the 177 inductees, encourage all citizens to educate themselves concerning this effort and get involved in nominating worthy veterans. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Walton County Board of Commissioners, to further recognize and honor this endeavor and inductees, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November the 4th, 2023, as the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Day. So proclaim this third day of October, 2023. And I proudly sign that and we will get it to the veterans. The other proclamation is for our Manufacturing Appreciation Week. And it's recognizing the manufacturing facilities located in Walton County that provide 3,131 jobs and generate more than $243 million in wages for our citizens. Manufacturing represents one of the largest business segments of Walton County's private sector and contributes more than $580 million to our economy annually. Walton County's manufacturing operations include a wide variety of product families such as pharmaceuticals, automotive parts, plastics, bedding products, building materials, commercial industrial equipment, steel, doors, windows, printing products, and wood products. Manufacturing Appreciation Week promotes the industry and manufacturing throughout Georgia and education and tries to increase public awareness to celebrate the achievements of manufacturers in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Walton County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th as Manufacturing Appreciation Week in Walton County. And I'll gladly sign that and hand it over to the Development Authority. And with that said, our most exciting part of the meeting is planning and development. And we will jump right into it. Sharna, 5.1, please.
5.1, denial of conditional use 2308-0005. This is 241.64 acres. They're requesting an event venue and a variance to the regulation that the venue be allowed on a road that is not arterial or collector. Applicant is Daniel Lee Farm at Kent Rock LLC. The owner is Julian H. Daniel Lee and Julie Daniel Lee Brado, trustee. Property is located at 555 Kent Rock Road, and this is in District 3. So we had a land development specialist that was at the Planning Commission that represented the event venue. And there was, like I said, a variance needed because Kent Rock Road is not a collector or arterial. There was no one in opposition. We did have a recommendation from Public Works about a commercial driveway being installed. The Planning Commission recommended denial due to the fact that this was not an arterial or collector road.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to open a public hearing on this application. And the applicant, if they would come up and tell us what you have in mind for this piece of property, please.
State your name, please.
Huh? Yes, please state your name and where you live, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Doug Sherrill. I am a land surveyor, land planner. I live in Delonica, Georgia. My office is in Dawsonville, Georgia. My client owns 241 acres here and we're seeking an event venue. It is currently in a trust and they're looking to privatize this into a single ownership of a member of the trust and keep this within the family. It's been in the family for many years. They have no intent to or desire to subdivide this piece of property. It's absolutely a beautiful piece of property. They have a very nice home on this estate. I'd like to call it an estate, that's what it is, with a very nice, large lake. And we want to, my client wants to construct approximately not more than 5,000 square-foot event facility for weddings and different corporate events. It has a paved road all the way to this existing area where we would seek to construct this facility. We would have to add parking in the back. There is nowhere around this, where we would build this, there's, it's unseen from any direction, northeast, south, or west from the adjoining property owners. The road access into it, I know there was a recommendation that we improve the frontage, the access, which we could certainly do to a commercial driveway. It currently has a large monument sign, if you will, with a gate on it, a pretty wide-mouth opening for the road. So we'd make sure there's, there's no problem with, with housing all the traffic onsite in the property. There would be no way that, that traffic would back up onto this existing street. We've also ascertained a number of neighbors who have been in support of this and they've sent letters in, about half a dozen letters that we have, in support of, of doing this event. And they see no harm for the, to the neighborhood or the adjoining properties. Again, it's 241 acres. We would have a minimum of a 50-foot undisturbed vegetated buffer around where we're doing this facility. It is on the north side of the property. I don't know if, if you have, do we have the site plan that we can, okay. You have the site plan available to you that shows that facility on the north side. It's just on the north and east edge of that existing lake is where we're proposing to build that facility. There's deer all over this property. I mean, this is just a, this is truly a resort property. It's, it's a, it's a jewel, in my estimation. I flew the property with our drone and took good imagery and a topographic map of the property. We fully intend to provide the county and go through the site planning, erosion control plans, and make sure that all that would meet your, your requirements should you grant approval tonight. And with that, I would like to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal and if you have any questions.
Yes. Does any of the board members have any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone here, other than the applicant, wants to speak in favor of this application?
Excuse me, Chairman. I did want to mention that I did hand out letters that we had from some adjoining property owners. I forgot to mention that.
Okay.
I gave those to you before the meeting started.
Seeing no one else want to speak in favor of this, anyone here in opposition to this rezone would like to come up and make a statement? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, thank you. I will now close the public meeting and ask the board their recommendation.
I was going to deny this and follow the, and follow the Planning Commission, but we have no opposition, so I'm going to make the motion to approve it.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
We have one, Commissioner Bradford, oppose. Thank you. Item 5.2. Feel free to exit if you were here for that, but please refrain from talking till you get downstairs because it reverberates back up through here.
Okay. The next case, 5.2, recommendation is for denial of Z 2308-0001. This is 61.44 acres. They wanted to rezone this property from A1 to A for short-term rental and have an event venue with a variance, that the event venue be allowed on a road that is not arterial or collector. The applicant is Sikar Thadaparthi. The owner is Bobby Butler II and Bob Butler, trustee, Triple B Family Trust, property located at 1540 Lipscomb Road. This is in District 4. The applicant has submitted a request to withdraw the rezoned portion of, rezoning the property to A for an event venue, but they would like to go for, I mean, short-term rental, excuse me, but they would like to move forward with the event venue. There were some residents that spoke in opposition at the Planning Commission. Their main concerns were that this property is not located on a collector as required, the noise pollution and the activities that this type of use brings to the neighborhood. The Planning Commission recommended denial due to the venue not being on a arterial or collector as required by code.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Not at this time. Okay, I'm going to open a public hearing on this application. And if the applicant or owner or both would like to come forward and tell us what you want to do.
Good evening, Commissioner and Board. I'm Christine Cavan, C-A-V-I-N, and I represent the applicant. And they are handing out some materials for you tonight. As mentioned, they have taken away the application for the rezoning. And now they just want a special event venue, just like the previous applicant. This is a very special piece of property. It does need a substantial amount of work. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars just to restore the house. There is no intent to build any other buildings on the property. Every intent will be made to have security for any events. It is a gated property. It will have a permanent caretaker on the property. So there will always be somebody there to address any issues that arise. This is Shaker Thadaparthi. He is part of the applicant. Shaker and I have done work for many, many years, 15 years. He's a naturalized citizen and is very involved in his community and wants to reach out and have a special place for his family and friends and others to celebrate life events. And we think that this would be a beautiful venue to do that. With 61 acres and where the property is located, there will be barriers, sound barriers. It will not bother the neighbors. Every intent is to control the noise, control the traffic. The parking will all be onsite. There will be no parking on the street. And they really would like the opportunity to provide this service to the community and to their family and friends. And again, there's no intent to subdivide this property. It is all just a special use venue and no Airbnb. There will not be house parties, as some people, I believe, are concerned will happen. So Mr. Thadaparthi has, has handout that he's giving you, that he's also putting up on board here. But this, again, is a very, very unique property. Mr. Thadaparthi is a man of his word. I can attest to that because I've done many, many things with him over the years. Do you have any comments that you want to make, Shaker? There will be security cameras installed all across the property so that there will not be any security concerns. It will not be used for Airbnb or VRBO. It is purely just for special events. We understand and have reviewed the code sections regarding loud noises and the time limits and everything else involved. And we are willing to abide by all of those rules. So the impact of, environmental impact, there will be very little environmental impact. This is completely just to restore the home to its original beautiful situation. It does need a lot of love. And there is a lake, but again, there will be a full-time property manager onsite. In addition, this property was under a conservation use assessment, and that is going away. So this is going to be a huge boon to the property tax records because it is a very valuable piece of property and it will contribute to the tax records and the tax rolls. In addition to running a business, there will be taxes there as well. So it will benefit the community both tax-wise and to help other people in the area celebrate their special events. You have any other comments? And I do want to point out that he wants to put it in place for businesses and families in the community, especially those, you've got a lot of businesses coming into the community that are going to be very important to the community. And we want to make sure that they feel welcome and that we have special event venues. And I know there's a concern that maybe there are too many venues, but I think when we get this many people in, that you can't really have too many venues of this nature. So we would appreciate your consideration and approval of this application. Again, there's, the Airbnb and the VRBO, the short-term rentals is off the table. That's not a part of this. It's purely just to do the special events.
Okay.
Any questions?
Does the board have any questions at this point? Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Okay. I will now ask for those in opposition to come up and state your name, where you live, and what your opposition to this application is. You can pull it up on the map for us.
I'm Stacy Philippus. I live in close proximity to the property that we're discussing here tonight and just a few houses up from it. And first of all, thank you, Board, for your service to Walton County. I know you guys have a tough job and we appreciate all you do. But in regards to the, and I understand we've pulled the rezoning, but we're still going to use the property as an event venue. And that's really the concern we had back when we met with the, with the Planning Board. And, but basically, just if I could just give you just a little background on where we are today. When the rezoning notice first was posted, a few of us got together and we went out door-to-door. We went to every piece of property that's on that map that you see there. And we talked to all the residents, just to kind of get a feel for, you know, for how does everybody feel about it? Is this really something that we want to have in our neighborhood? And so we went and door-to-door and we found no one that was in favor of rezoning this property for the purposes of bringing an event venue to our neighborhood. You should have in front of you, I hope the, the planning and development folks, I hope they forwarded that petition that we had circulated when we went around and did these, these home visits the first time around. Hope you see that. If you don't, I can get you a copy of it. But it's, it's rather lengthy. And if you don't have one, I could certainly get that for you later. But I think the thing we have to remind ourselves here is that, as was stated during the presentation, that the, that's a very, that home on that property is very large. It's over 6,000 square feet. It has a guest house. And you could easily host a wedding or some type of a party or whatever you want to call it, whatever event, you could easily get 200 or 300 people there on that property. And, and you know, you could get on social media and, you know, you could, whatever you want to call the event, you start tagging your friends, you could easily get that, that number of people on, on that property for an event like that. The concern everybody had, obviously, would have been the noise, the traffic, and what could result in the gathering of that many people together, where you know they're going to have alcohol and there's a potential for drug activity. Yeah, oh yeah. And whatever might result from that when you get a group that, that large together. Many of the people we spoke to moved here from neighboring counties. I mean, we're from, I originally came from Rockdale. I know there's a lot of folks from Newton, Gwinnett, and some, even a few of the folks we met, even out of state. But they came to get away from this very thing. I mean, any type of a commercial type of an event venue that we're talking about here, we're all, potentially, a lot of people could be coming into our neighborhood to celebrate whatever it is. I'm all good for a good celebration, a good party, but not where we live in our neighborhood here. And if you look at that map, if, that property is right between Georgia Highway 11, if you're familiar with that part of the county, and Mount Perrin Church Road. It is right in the middle of that residential area, right in the middle of it. So there's going to be, a lot of people are going to be affected by the noise and whatever else is going to come with this. And, and again, you've got to understand that this is a quiet residential area and many of our neighbors have horses. I mean, they get out and they walk and they, you know, they jog, they ride their golf carts. I mean, this is their home. I mean, this is where these people live. And a lot of these folks have made a major investment to live here, okay? And now everything looks like it's about to change here. And again, and there's also several, in the last six months, I know there's been, several homes have been just recently completed, I know on Lipscomb and Cox Cemetery Road. And, and I know there's still three that's under construction. So I mean, and you think about it, if you're in that position, you're building a house, I mean, how would you feel about that? I mean, I'd be terrified if that was me. And I'm not even building them, but I already live there. And I understand what this could potentially lead to. And so the other concerns that we heard was, of course, the issue with the, the variance to the county regulation for the collector arterial road. I mean, Lipscomb just does not meet that requirement, just plain and simple. And then secondly, what was mentioned earlier about, you know, we're talking about events. What type of, we hear wedding and birthday parties, and that's awesome. I mean, I, that's great. But what else could, could be hosted? What type of event could be hosted there? And I'm not really sure if we're real, or at least I'm not real clear on that. And, and again, I mean, we also have the potential where people coming in to participate or get involved in these events, they're likely not going to be from our neighborhood. So we've got a lot of people coming in and out of the neighborhood that just don't live there, okay? And then, and I know, and it was mentioned earlier that, yeah, we already have several wedding venues in the area. We, I know of three, just off the top of my head, right around Social Circle. I mean, and so do we really need another one? And I know that Fairweather Farms, I mean, is probably just a little over a mile from this same property. I mean, so again, I mean, do we really need another event property, venue in this area? And then finally, the concern here is that neither party that was originally on the application, I know the rezoning's off the table, but still, the parties that have the interest here, that were involved in trying to get this rezoned or allow this event venue to come about, then there's, there's still the potential that, with all the noise and, and then everything that we're going to have to deal with, those parties aren't going to be around when the music starts. When these people start coming in, these events start taking place, then we're going to have to deal, and a lot of these folks you see sitting here tonight, we're going to have to deal with the noise and so forth and whatever could happen there. And this thing about bringing security in, I'm thinking, oh my God, what, security? I mean, do we, I mean, this is our home here. This is our neighborhood. I mean, do we need security out there? But if, if something like this happens, well, that could very well, there could be a need for that. And that, that terrifies me to think about that because, again, this is our home. And, and again, the other thing that's in the back of my mind, at least mine personally, is, you know, our world is already being rocked here by this thing with Rivian. And I know that at least this part of the county you're in, and we still don't know what that's going to do to us. And, and what's sad is we're not going to really know probably for another two or three years. And, but what we do know is that little town on Social Circle that we live in, it's never going to be the same, folks. It's not, it's not going to be that little country town that we all moved out here to actually live in. And, and again, I'm sure there's a good place for this type of venue, I mean, in like Gwinnett or Atlanta or somewhere else. But again, this is our home. This is the place where, where we want to, you know, raise our children, spend time with our grandchildren. And the people who live there, they just want to leave it just like it is. And, and I'll, I'll close with this. And the question I'd like to direct to you guys, you guys, members, members of the board here, I mean, would you want something like this in your neighborhood or your subdivision? That's what really hit home to me. I'm thinking like, wow, you know? But that's something, just, just to think about. I mean, would you want something like that? Again, there's nothing wrong with a good party, but do you want that right there where you live? Just something to, yeah, consider. But again, thank you for your time and again, thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in opposition has something different than what he's covered? We don't like to go over the exact same complaints we get, the complaints. Please come forward if you've got a different item that you're in.
They only got three bathrooms in the house. I want that child going to a waiting room.
Please, 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 you're going to have to speak from the podium so we can get it recorded.
I live on Whitney Road, right, almost in their front yard if you cut through the neighbors. The house only has three bathrooms. I've been in it. I don't want it in my neighborhood. And I don't know about y'all going to a porta potty at a wedding or even a birthday party, but we don't like them. Our roads are not made up for it. This is our home and this is our neighborhood. And we would appreciate it if you do not let these people come in our neighborhood and run it.
Okay, thank you. Please, ma'am. Please, ma'am.
Good evening, and thank you all. I just want to add a little personal touch from all of this.
Name and address first, please.
Name is Kelly Finelli. Address is 1446 Lipscomb Road.
Shelley Finelli.
Kelly with a K.
Oh, Kelly.
Right.
Okay.
Social Circle, Georgia, of course. My reason for, for being up here is, is basically more of a personal attachment to this place. My mother used to live in that home, so I know it very well. I was there when it was built, from the time it was built down. It's not equipped for parties. It was equipped for family parties, family gatherings, but not, they always said, if anything ever happens to us, do not sell this property, keep it in the family. Well, that's not going to happen. But, excuse me, to, to let y'all know, my yard, I originally owned a piece of that property that was a larger tract to begin with. I came back to take care of my mother, so they gave me a piece of property to move into. My yard backs up, there's a, there's a pond, and then there's a little dam, a driveway, a bridge my boys built, the lake that's on that property, and the house. Okay? If there are large parties, and this goes for my neighbors as well, because nobody has fences out there. We've all raised children. I've raised two boys in Social Circle High School, all from the ground up. But we just don't have that kind of activity. And I do know that even that, when we did, if, if somebody two miles up the street from us is having a party, a lot of times, we can hear it. And that's not the problem. The problem is, there's no, there's no fencing, there's no guards, there's nothing saying that somebody can't get away from a party there. And I know, these people are saying that they're, they're buying the place. They're personally not living on it, but they're going to have somebody stay on it. That somebody doesn't always know everything that's going on. Everybody knows that if you've raised children, if you've got family members, everybody knows this happens. So all I'm saying is, myself, and my neighbors included, we do not want it where people are out there on that property, and there's a large amount of people, and somebody walk off, and for God, who knows what reason, falls in a pond, or, or hurts somebody, or, or does anything out of the ordinary. And we're, all we're trying to do is live back there and raise our families. We just don't want this out there. And I know the reason why it's being done this way, we don't, as a community, we don't want it, we just don't want it. We want our neighborhood, we want it quiet, we want it closed off. We want to love our neighbors and be the biggest part of this community we can. But we don't want outsiders coming in, turning it into a party place. It's just not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does someone else have something that we haven't covered in the opposition? Still got one? Okay. Yeah, speak now, forever hold your peace.
My name is Katie Bozenitz, and I live on 1975 Lipscomb Road. We live just on up the road, just from that piece of property. It's, as you can see, it's a very, very narrow strip. So it's not like they can spread out over a lot of acreage. It's, it's just going to be, I know the noise thing has been brought up over and over again, but we have friends who own, like, a, a piece of property that they rent out, and that's all they get is noise complaint. The cops have to come to this property all the time. And this is in Covington. And here, we just moved out of Covington to get out of the noise. And it's just a quiet neighborhood. Nobody wants it out there. And I know the cops are going to be called a lot. I just know it, because nobody, you know, when you don't live in that property, you don't care about it as much as the people who do live there. So I just wanted to point out, it's very narrow. You can't just spread out and keep it quiet. It's very difficult. Also, another, at one of our previous meetings, somebody mentioned about our road not being built for over 200 cars a day. And so we already max out at that limit with that road. And I just don't know what kind of, you know, how much we're going to have to fix that road later on down the, on down the line with taxes. So I just thought I'd point that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate all of you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to go back to the applicant and let them make comments on the concerns.
I do want to thank you for your proclamation. My husband spent 21 years in the Marine Corps, so I, I really do appreciate that at the beginning of the meeting. With all due respect to the people that have been up here, I think that there's a misunderstanding about what the goal of this property is. The goal is not to have these grandiose, huge house parties with drugs, and teenagers, and all of that. This is all about family celebrations, and meditation, and being respectful to our neighbors. The purchasers are willing to put the money in, to put fencing around the entire property. This is, can we put back up the picture of the property? Is that possible? It, it's missing part of the acreage. The picture that you've seen, the tax assessment, there are actually two parcels. Only one parcel is being depicted, so it is actually wider than you think it is. There is 61 acres, so that parcel is missing out of the grand picture in the scheme of things. So if you look, yeah, there is, there are 61 acres. That piece at the top left is a separate parcel ID number. And so the tax parcel assessor site, you have to look at both of those. And they're both part of the, the transaction. So they were, these people want to be so respectful to their neighbors, to the extent of they will bend over backwards to make sure everything is done, to mitigate any inconvenience, noise, anything that could be somehow offensive to the neighbors. And they really do have this great intent. These are, are people that are part of our communities, and we need to welcome them, and, and, they're, they're good people. And they don't, they're not going to be having these house parties that you hear about on the internet. Shaker, do you have anything to say?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Shaker Thadiparti. I live in Cumming, 3050 Waterston Drive. And our main purpose of buying this, we are family, like, group of families together, we are planning to buy. We thought initially, we will make it as a short-term rentals, but after hearing the neighbors' concern, we decided to, not to rezone that, and we'll just go for mostly family, our families, or extended families' parties. And it, it will be very small scale. And someone, someone was asking what type of parties. Mostly, they'll be celebration of events, like birthday parties. And some of them are meditation retreats. And like, some of them are like wedding avenues. I, I, I think it'll be rare. If at all, there is any family wedding event, only then we might allow. Otherwise, it'll be a small scale. It will be less than 100, 100 people. And we'll make sure that there will not be any traffic issues. And we'll make sure that we are going to fence it. We'll make sure that we'll have all the surveillance cameras. And we'll make sure that there'll, there'll not be any noise pollution. And we can install the noise decibels on all corners to show that noise level is less than, less than the ordinance regulations. So this property, I think, is unique property. And this is not property that can be subdivided and make many more tracts. I believe this will be a very good pro, par, tract, parcel for a family, friends, and for having small-scale parties. So I would really appreciate if you can allow us to use it mostly for family events. We would really appreciate that. And we are not going to have short-term rental. And I'll make sure that neighbors will not have any issues, or any, any security issues, or any noise pollution. We'll make sure on that.
Okay. Does any of the board members have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We've heard from everyone. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board their wishes on this application.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the rezon, and also accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Committee to deny the event venue.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the withdrawal of the rezon, and the recommendation of the Planning Commission to deny this. Do we have a second? Second. Okay, we have a second. That's Lee Bradford, Tim Shelton. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion, say aye. Oppose?
Aye.
We got Kirkland. So we have one, two, three, four.
Redo it.
Huh?
Redo the vote.
Redo the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote by Commissioner. Lee Bradford made the motion. Your vote is yes, correct?
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, just call for the vote. Why we got to do, I mean, we, I mean.
I want to vote no. I voted yes, I voted wrong. I want to vote with.
We got one commissioner before it was tallied.
Okay.
And every commissioner has a right to change his vote until it's official.
I do have a question. Like, can we, can we still have discussion on this, or no?
Yes.
Is it?
Because we got a second call of the vote.
So, Sharona, just for my question, for a family to have a birthday party at their house, for a family-owned property, is it required to rezon it, or?
No, sir.
To make it a special event venue?
No, sir.
Okay.
It is required if they're going to charge.
You have family reunions.
Exactly.
Advertise and charge to use the property.
And the same thing, if a family member wants to have a wedding.
That's correct.
At their home that they own, do you have to have a special event venue for that?
No, you do not.
Okay, which is what the applicant had stated would be the purpose of it. So once again, I would like to accept the withdrawal of the rezon, and also accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny the event venue, due to it not being on an arterial road that this board put into place.
Okay, that's a motion I'll recall for a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Call the vote. When you vote, show your hand also. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, passes on the denial. Somebody's got to shut up loud.
I think he's going through the crowd.
I can't even look. Now, please, please, please. This is not the place for pep rally. Thank you very much. Those that's involved in this can exit. We still have two more to do. So y'all get to eat supper, and we don't.
Yes, sir.
No, you didn't. We had a four to one vote, and we just, and you're exactly right. This, you can have.
Yes, ma'am.
You can have weddings and stuff. And we've had them up at Mom and Dad's, yeah. But to advertise it, make it commercial, and get away from family, then you need an event. Yeah, y'all hold the conversation until you get downstairs, please. We still got a pretty long meeting. All right, Sharona, let's try starting, please.
Okay, 5.3. This is a Planning Commission recommend approval of Z23070021. This is 7.91 acres. They want to rezon from A1 to B2 with conditional use for outside storage for a landscaping business. The applicant is Advanced Landscape Services, Inc. Owner is Shelby GT Properties, LLC. Property is located at 4930 Georgia Highway 20. This is in District 2. Rick Sullivan represented the case at the Planning Commission. He has been in the landscape business for 32 years, and would like to, sorry, Kristy, ask for a conditional use for outside storage for his landscape business. He stated he would not need to construct any additional buildings, but would use what's currently there on site. There were no objections, and the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay, thank you, Sharona. I'm going to open public hearing on this. As the applicant here, would like to come up and tell us what they want to do. Aren't you glad the big crowd left? They might have been here for you.
Feel better now. Well, I'm Scott Sullivan, Rick Sullivan's son. That's my brother over there, Craig. We're a family-owned business. I didn't even my address right. 552 Drake Circle, Winder, Georgia. But, now, we're just going to use the property, I mean, as it is. We're going to clean it up. Place almost looks abandoned right now. All the buildings on the back side of the property, so you actually can't even see it from the street. So the only things that we're going to be storing outside is really just like trucks and equipment. Just landscape equipment, not much, so.
Okay. Any questions from the board at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here in favor of this would like to make a statement? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition to this would like to come forth and make a statement? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the board for a recommendation.
See how good us people in District 2 does.
Look at this.
Mr. Chairman, I've met with this family and walked the property, and I think this will be, they'll be a great asset to the community. And I make a motion that we approve this rezon.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We got a unanimous vote of those that are here. Thank you. 5.4.
Okay. This is Planning, Planning Commission recommendation for denial of Z23070022. This is 18.25 acres. That is currently zoned A2 and R1 to B2 with conditional use for outside storage of boats and RVs. Applicant is Red Rock Design. The owner is Dennis McMillan. Property is located on Pennell and Poplar, and this is in District 6. So this one's kind of easy, guys. They have asked to withdraw this case. It was recommended for denial.
So we don't need to have a public hearing?
We need to accept the withdrawal.
We need, need a motion to accept the withdrawal.
I make a motion to accept withdrawal.
Second.
We got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimous. I like easy ones. Okay, administrative consent agenda. Is there any questions as to what's on the administrative consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Resolutions. We got a project-linked budget for pavement-sealing project. It'll be a fiscal year 24 budget amendment. This is for sealing. I believe it's Providence Club, something like 17 roads.
Yes, sir. This would finish up our. Yes, sir. This would finish up our pavement preservation project in Providence Club.
Is this our first pavement preservation project?
No, sir. Our first one that we did in there was the Main Street Providence Club Drive.
Okay. You liked it so much, you wanted to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the amount of the amendment is?
Forty-seven, 103.
It was 47,000 something, yes. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we got acceptance of bids which came in yesterday. The first one is the access road clearing and grubbing that will come from 78 around to Baker Street. And the amount is recommended to award to AKA Tree Service in the amount of $247,465.70. This will be subject to finalizing the land acquisition. And this was below what the estimates were. If I can get a motion to move forward with that, subject to land acquisition.
So moved.
We got a motion.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Passes. Sewer relocation. In doing the jail, we've got to relocate some of the City of Monroe John Howard Sewer. Before they let us tie onto the sewer, they got a kink in the line and that doesn't work good for sewers. So the county's gonna fix the city sewer. The low bid was Mid-South Builders. This one, though, is $398,469. And it's recommended that we accept this. This is Mid-South Builders.
Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Two abstentions, Kirkland and Lee Bradford. Okay, we're down to the county manager's report. John, you're finally up.
Total patient appointments for the last month, 210, an increase of 94 patients, 45 new patients, same-day appointments, 57. We have used techs care, wellness visits, as well as online. And well in advance of what was ever anticipated, in just a few short months, we've reached 54.7%. And the HR staff should be commended of working with also the clinic staff.
Can you pull your microphone a little closer to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
With the utilization of 54.7%, well in advance of what we anticipated in opening a facility, I just want to commend, both David and I, I'd like to commend the HR staff on being able to encourage, educate, and share this opportunity with our employees because in the end, it results in a significant decrease in the amount of insurance payments and medical costs that we have, that county has to pay for healthcare for employees as far as their benefit package. That's a wonderful number. We already have some additional programs that'll be rolling out to get that number even higher. And we'll be working with one-to-one staff even earlier than we thought because often there are days when every single opportunity to visit the wellness clinic or in the health clinic have already been booked. So we're already looking at some different options there. Want to remind the commission that on, let me get my date right, on November 14th, from 10 o'clock in the morning till 12 o'clock, we will be hosting the ACCG Regional Meeting. It will be at the Georgia Bioscience Training Center in Social Circle. So I'd like to really put you on the, get you to put that on your calendar. We'll be the host.
We need to get with Rhonda and register for that. Lee has registered, me and John, but the other commissioners, that's right here at home down at the Shire.
They're tired for that. It's casual?
Casual. All ACCG events are casual.
It would be really nice because we were able to work with ACCG and provide a host facility. And it's gonna be able to show the rest of the people in the region what type of training opportunities that we have due to the economic development projects that are in the Stanton Springs area and the Social Circle. So that, put that on your calendar. And then just to clarify, November 14th, that evening, we'll need to try to get everybody here by 5:30 instead of 6:00 because we'll have a presentation by the partnership. And again, there'll be food provided in advance of the meeting that night as part of that. Couple of other things that I have for you, and probably one of the most significant ones. We are working on two main areas. We've got, we're working with the City of Jersey on some paving projects inside the city limits. So we'll be moving forward and working with the mayor on that. We've been communicating back and forth as well as with Public Works. And there is a neighborhood down 138 that has experienced several waterline breaks. It appears to be due to materials. These pipes were placed in there before ductile iron was required. So we're working on a plan, both in the short term as well as the long term for replacement and addressing of that because obviously, water loss and people being able to have access to that is a concern of that community. So we're well aware of it, but we are working on some game plans on how to fix that. And to finish up, want to bring one more thing to your attention and if it's been a recurring thing, that's sort of the intention here to keep you updated on this. We have 942 positions that are currently funded. Continue to have about 75 that are open. The concerning part about that 75 are that 78.7% of them, or right at 60, are public safety. Getting applicants who are willing to work shifts, getting applicants who are willing to be away from their family such extended period of times. And probably one of the most significant ones involved there because every aspect of public safety is running towards something to try to deal and provide assistance to the community. But the brain or the lifeline for everybody that's running out to help is your 911. And we continue to have issues there. Work holidays, just like all the other public safety, work long hours, high level of pressure, but we continue to have those numbers. So currently, right now, of the open positions across the county, 78.7% are associated with public safety. 21.3% are non-public safety. There are other departments that are also having trouble hiring, but not to the extent that public safety has been.
Okay, thank you, John. Any questions on the county manager's report? I'm glad to hear the clinic is being accepted very well. Have one of the sheriff's deputies said that, you know, I went to the clinic, they really took care of me, and I didn't have to pay anything. I'm like, we told you all that before we did it. Okay, next on the item for discussion. Governor Kemp's Leadership Committee is calling on elected officials, those that will, to support Atlanta's Public Safety Training Center. This training center will be providing effective training for our law enforcement, I was here, firefighters, paramedics, excuse me, and all first responders. And I'd like to take initiative to voice my support in a form of a motion for Atlanta's Public Safety Training Center and poll the boards, see how they feel about it for the record. And then I fully support it and make that motion. We do. We got a second by Lee Bradford. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Thank you, Walton County. You're a good bunch. We do support our public safety and first responders and will always. Couple of things that's not on discussion. Hank has the old National Bank building over here on the corner cleaned out finally. And we're ready. We ordered appraisal back in March or April, but we're ready to start advertising. And I'd like the board to officially give me permission to move forward with selling that building. What we're proposing, the appraisal was 690,000. It'll take a little money to advertise, so we're gonna put a minimum bid of 700,000 on the building. $1 above that, we'll buy it. But we'll do an auction and advertise it sometime in November with a date coming. If y'all give me permission, move ahead with that.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion.
It'll be a live auction.
It'll be a live auction. You'll have to bring a letter. It'll be fun.
Are we gonna shut down the streets? Can we get, John, can we?
I don't think there'll be that many bidders. I don't think there'll be that many bidders because 700,000 is a high step to begin with. But we feel like a building will bring a little bit more than that.
I think we ought to do it on a Friday night concert night.
No. Can I get a second to Tim's motion so we can move ahead? Thank you. All those in favor of me moving forward, selling the building, say aye. Any opposition? Well, we'll get it back on the tax book and make Mayor Howard happy. He'll have another item there. We have no one signed up for public comment. Are there any announcements any of y'all need to make?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to take a minute. I've had several people ask me, last Thursday, my granddaughter was, took to the doctor and they diagnosed her that she had RSV. And it, things went pretty quick. She went from being transported by an ambulance to being life-lighted out to children's health care. And it's been a very stressful week for my family, but she's got out of intensive care today and she's coming off of Ockston, so it looks like she's gonna make it. But when you see a three-month-old being life-lighted, it's a pop. It kinda tears your heart out. So if you got your kids or grandkids, go home and hug them while you can. Because when you can't, it makes it pretty tough on you. But thank each one of you that's called or showed your concern. I appreciate it.
And food for thought, not going to address it at this board meeting, and we will have an executive session. All of us know, we see it, and I hear people complaining, we still have inflation eating us alive. It's 4.2% so far this year weighted average. And I'm gonna be recommending, next board meeting, another pay raise for our county employees' cost of living. And it looks like 4.5%. And I'll explain how it's gonna be paid for and it won't be a tax increase. They've been watching their expenses and, but we'll have a whole month, if y'all want to get with me and ask questions. We've paid for another study to make a recommendation. If we don't keep up, the private sector will take our county employees away from us. So I'll be making that recommendation next month. Food for thought.
Yeah, with that, with that recommendation, something that I would ask to be thought of with is that the openings that we're seeing is 78.7% in public safety. I would, in some of that food for thought, if somebody has some ideas or recommendations or something that we can do to come up with to try to bridge that gap.
We have, yeah, we have an option and we're looking at it and we're gonna have to discuss the defined benefits program. If we keep that program, and you gotta keep it for those that's on it. But starting when you hires the first fiscal year, we can not allow the defined benefits to be an option and do a 401K. And then we can take different departments that's having a problem hiring and increase the match for that particular hire to their 401K. And it'll make it more attractive to come to work here. And it won't take away from existing employees and what they already have. Hiring for the jail, for 911, and the sheriff's department. Unfortunately, the media has made the profession not as desirable for younger trainees coming on. And we're part of Metro Atlanta, unfortunately, and we're not part of Metro Atlanta, but we're having to compete with Metro Atlanta salaries. So we're looking at that. And this will be yet another 4.5% increase on existing salaries across the board because we've all seen it. Even the loaf of bread's gone up since last year. A gallon of milk's gone up since last year. Only thing's gone down, or held its own, is gas. And it can change at any moment. So we'll discuss it next month. We'll allow time for a length of questions. And then we most likely will appoint a committee to work with the sheriff's department or with the 911 center to come up with, you know, different avenues to try to hire these positions. Jail's the most hardest to hire right now. Thank God the sheriff makes a new deputy work at the jail one year before they become a patrolman. So that's how he's covering what we have at the jail. It's a tough egg to break. And you got DA complaining right now because DeKalb County's paying 40,000 more for one out of college than we can afford to pay here for practicing a, you know, prosecuting attorney, so. But with that being said, we will address it. We will get into it. I'd be glad to meet with any of you one-on-one and show you where we're at in the pay scale. The Condris want to spend another 42 grand on another study and we're not gonna do that. We got enough expertise with John and department heads. They know what's going on around them. And we can make our own decision there. But we do have some real estate we need to discuss in executive session. And we most likely will be coming out and making a statement on that, hopefully. So with that in mind, in the later time, I entertain a motion to adjourn into the executive session.
Second.
All right, John, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.